Hi, everyone. Welcome to the April Green Bank Board Meeting. It's good to see your faces. I'm going to turn to our Secretary at Hubbard to do the roll call and quorum count.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, great. So, for the purposes of determining whether or not we have a quorum to proceed with business, I believe I saw Priya Chandran.
Present.
Rick Nogera.
Here.
Deb Loomis. Todd Monash. And Hubbard is here. And Brandy Colander. So Todd's not here, but we have.
Todd is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Todd, sorry for the oversight. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And can we do the minutes as well?
Yes, I would move that the draft minutes for the open portion of the February 16th regular meeting of the board be adopted. Can I get a second?
Second.
To all those in, well, let me do a roll call vote. Priya Chandran, how do you vote? To approve or not?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Rick Nogera, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deb Loomis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Todd Monash, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote, and Hubbard votes in affirmative. Brandy Colander, how do you vote?
Aye.
Awesome. Madam Chair, those draft minutes of the open portion of the February 16th meeting are adopted.
Thanks, Ed. I'm going to move into Executive Committee. I think the highlight here is that we are in the process of, it's been three years since the inception of the Green Bank, three years of us as one board, two years since having a team and Eli on board, and our first time going through a performance review process. So we will have some follow-up discussions and a closed session later to deal with some personnel pieces as we continue to refine and create a process. And there will likely be some board follow-up there. So I will just put that footnote down. Tiber will probably be the ones to do some outreach to have another conversation with just the board. And I think it's a really exciting time to be at this point in process where we have a team that's evolved. We have projects and we can continue to tweak and make adjustments as we see fit. So that's the priority update on the Exec Committee side.
And at this point, I would have turned to the Governance Committee. This in order, oh, I'm sorry, financing me, I'm sorry. I must have jumped ahead of mine.
That's okay. Todd, do you want to give an update for finance?
Sure, I really appreciate it. The 2324 budget is being worked on. Gene should have a preliminary draft of that for the next board meeting. Also participated with the meeting with DOE and DCSU. So I think it's always important to recognize that the DC Green Bank is working closely with the different agencies and keeping updated on different projects and how we overlap.
Great. Todd, just a question on the hearings and thank you and Eli and team for presenting the projections, at least for the board. Were there any major takeaways or anything that's worth highlighting with the board? Remember last time you had a really good catch around IT support? Just wanted to know if there's anything we need to have on our radar.
Not at this point, perhaps at the next meeting or next board meeting, we'll have one of these surprise moments.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Todd. Rick, turning to you for HR.
On HR, I think as we mentioned at the last meeting, there's two senior positions that are open at the Chief Investment Officer, as well as the General Counsel. The process for Chief Investment Officer has been ongoing and maybe nearing completion. We'll talk more about that in the closed session because it will involve hiring, direct hiring matters and individuals. But the management team at the bank has gotten some of the board members involved, particularly from the HR Committee, in helping out in some of the interviews. And I think that's getting very close, just on the CIO. And on the General Counsel, that's still an open position. And the process is ongoing. And we'll probably hear some feedback or highlights on that again on the closed session from Eli.
That's great. Thanks, Rick. Glad to hear that there's some strong candidates. And then Ed, for Governance?
Yes, you know, the Governance Committee has been focused on trying to, you know, clean up the bylaws, as well as, you know, kind of clarify some of the delegation issues. Just for the purposes of today's discussion, we are continuing that. We tabled that, some of the further discussions with respect to those those amendments, just for the sake of time. So I think we will probably bring that up at the next board meeting, depending on the most appropriate time slot for that. But most of these changes, you have been socialized with everybody, but we'll certainly run them by you again when the time is appropriate.
Okay, great. Thank you. Eli, turning to you or Gary for public comments.
No public commenters registered.
Okay, we'll stick with you and Eli for updates.
Great, thank you. And so the team has had several successes, which we're excited to share. And this is the presenter view. Sorry, I'm not sure if Donald, this is you or Gary. You can share the other one. Thanks. There we go. Awesome, thank you. So we'll start with operations. Thanks, Rick, for giving a quick update on the two searches which are underway. We are, and I am joining you from our temporary office space and spaces at Noma. We had our first All Hands Day in the Office two weeks ago, a staff retreat, reviewing and working on our vision and values. And it's really exciting opportunity to finally get all of us together in the same place. I think the staff is also excited to get to see each other, work together, see each other, at least from nose up. And a really productive day in helping get everybody aligned and reinvested and integrated and focusing on our values. We have our first iteration of our strategic plan, which is being revised and underway. We also, as the Chair mentioned, have undergone our performance review for all staff and are discussing later today with the board, the performance review for me. So glad to be at that point in our maturation where we can we can go through these good business practices. And then finally, on general operations, just a quick note that we've been doing quite a bit of work with our colleagues at DOE, at DCSU, on standing up our portion of the Affordable Housing Accelerator, so matching the grants that are coming out from the DCSU side with available finances. Quite a bit of work going on behind the scenes there. Been looking forward to getting our first project launched there in a couple of months. I will read all of these, but it's been another busy engagement season as we're getting into spring. Highlights, you know, we got to do last week a tree planting at Baker United Church, not far from my house, and with the Green Compass Team in Casey Trees. So excited to get out and work with some church members. It was a gorgeous day, so that all results. And then quite a broad range of press interest, including Washington Business Journal and the DC Line, as well as ongoing conversations with a variety of stakeholders and businesses. So really exciting, a couple of exciting announcements to make. We have closed our first Navigator loan with Mecasa Incorporated. It's affordable housing, very prime location. Excited to be a part of getting this project up and off the ground. Construction is expected to start later this fall. And we're in contact with Mecasa about potentially participating in both construction and permanent financing, if that's required. Looking to meet net zero, high energy star standards, as well as that solar on the roof, green roof, et cetera. So really exciting project. It was our first Navigator loan, so it took us a little bit longer to go through that process. But now that we've gone through it, we have several others in the queue with ITC and are getting more ready to start moving more quickly. Relatively low effort, just part of the design of the Navigator record. Also really excited to have our first Community Impact Initiative Term Loan. This is with Shiloh Baptist Church, 150-plus-year-old black congregation in DC. This facility had a chiller that was non-functional, which wasn't critical during the pandemic. But as we're returning to the worship hall, the church wants to make sure that they can cool it at the summer months. So we are excited to be providing financing for replacing that chiller based on the savings projected that Shiloh is going to see from a significant increase in efficiency. So there's also going to be, as you see, the production and energy use, production and greenhouse gas issues. It's roughly $520,000 term loan. So in a small to medium-sized project, but excited to work with them to potentially refinance additional efficiency upgrades, potentially solar upgrades on the facility going forward. And so excited to have our first CII project on the books and look forward to close several more, and seeing several more dearly at the next quarter. And we've also closed a facility with Flywheel Development. This is the construction loan for the 2022 Solar For All portfolio with Flywheel. And this is a Flywheel is a repeat borrower, great example of, you know, us building a relationship that's worked really well for both parties. And one just exciting point to highlight here, they're going to be installing the first of its kind solar shingle at one of the projects here in DC. These shingles are going to go on the Google headquarters roof when they move that project forward. But we're, Flywheel is able to deploy this technology here first. It's an integrated roofing project, so the TV panel is the roof and offers significant benefits to particular institutions. So excited to be part of helping bring that technology to DC. And overall, a significant project size may not end up needing to be quite as large as we budgeted for, but it's going to be a multimillion dollar loan, creating 22 construction jobs, significant renewable energy delivered, and all of that, working with Solar For All and our partners at SEU and DOE, is going to lower the energy bills for lower customers. So very exciting project, as you're all familiar with it. Don't need to reiterate the benefits of Solar For All. That continues to be a great opportunity. And then a new borrower and our first single-family residential facility. We're very excited to be working with Upris Electric, which is a local CVE. It's a smaller facility, given that it's single-family. They'll be working on up to 15 residential projects as part of Solar For All 2022. So these are solar installations on individual homeowners' houses. So very excited to be working with Upris on that and to be supporting additional new residential solar developers in the district. So really excited to have a new partner here. It's been, the loan's been going well so far. And what other just highlight here, not only is this a construction loan, but we're also providing working capital facilities. So there's a couple with the construction loan, 275K revolving credit line. This type of credit is critical for new businesses as they're getting started up and as they're trying to scale. And so we're really excited to be able to provide that for Upris. On our pipeline update overall, we have 36 active leads. When we put this together, that number continues to go up and down. There's a total need for $287 million of potential overall financing, of which we've highlighted 36 million of potential DC Green Bank financing, if all of these opportunities went through. So continuing to see sizable demand for Green Bank to support financing and sustainable projects. Then quick updates on some of the projects that we have disclosed in prior sessions that are either, you know, went to our board or were planning to go to the board. We have two projects that we are working on and that are going to be discussing with the board today. One is predevelopment loan, supporting green buildings, affordable housing. The other is a construction loan, supporting green buildings for a local minority-owned business. Our 2 megawatt solar construction facility at a university is moving to closing, hopefully in the next few weeks. And then several projects have closed, including the ones that I discussed previously. Excellent. Also in closing is a residential facility for local developers to really increase the scale of solar infancy. One other residential facility is on hold pending the selection of a new developer partner by our financing partner. And then other projects have closed, including Monkwood with CDFI's and then every other one that I just closed. Thank you. Any questions?
Eli, the Google, I'm sorry, the shingles, the solar shingles. Is there, I mean, I just feel like it's a really exciting sort of pioneering distinguishing technology that we're investing in. And I'm just wondering if there is a way to, or if you guys have thought about how you plan to communicate that? Or is there something we can dedicate on the website to educating people? And is it?
Absolutely. Gary, are you in a spot where I can call on you to give a quick highlight?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, Brandy, it's very exciting. So what we're doing right now is we're doing some, we're going to take some pictures, we're going to do some video during the installation process. We're also getting authorization from the FAA to fly a drone over the installation there. And we'll do a ribbon cutting on the back end as well. And so we'll have some of that footage. We put together a video showing sort of the story of this installation. We'll also use the drone to backfill some footage of Walter Lee and the installation there, so that we can tell this specific story, but also overall our impact on solar. And so we anticipate doing a ribbon cutting for this installation around mid May.
Awesome, thank you.
On that, on that subject, Brandy, Eli, I'd love to see you guys partner with the SEU to promote the application of the technology as well in the district.
We're working with Ben at SEU.
Great. Awesome.
And the exciting part about this technology and some of the other integrated roofing technologies is it makes the potential to access some of the roof types that haven't worked as well for traditional solar installations. So, you know, ideal right now is a flat roof, which we have a lot of in DC. But from some of the steeper roofs where there needs to be a replacement for slate or something along those the lines, this solar shingle is a potential replacement. So it really opens up a lot of new real estate that has been inaccessible or at least not cost competitive previously.
Exciting. Any other questions? Okay, Eli, is there anything else before we move to closing remarks and adjourning the open session?
There is. Brady, as you and I talked about yesterday, we have a handful of projects that we're going to be discussing in the closed session, but they raise policy questions, which, you know, I think it'd be helpful to tee up and have some discussion in the public session of the board. And so I won't be giving the precise details about the projects, but I wanted to, you know, raise a couple of questions, review where we've landed previously upon these issues, and then seek the board's input and guidance, if that's acceptable. Great. So the two categories that have been coming up, and we've gotten these questions quite a bit, two categories. What is how do we, how do we think about financing methane projects, methane retrofits? And the other is how do we think about financing projects? And typically, it's been solar, it's been the request that we've seen from outside of the district's borders. And so I'll kick off the methane conversation first, and then we can move to to funding outside the district. So on the, on the methane side, excuse me, we do not have a statutory restriction to date that prevents us from investing in methane projects. And based on conversations with you all over the past several months, with advocates, with government, et cetera, the general consensus is that eventually, in order to meet the city's climate commitments, both the net zero by 2050 and the interim goal of 50% reduction by 2035, we will need to move off of methane. And so there's no disagreement about that. And where the question has arisen is, if there's a facility that's existing methane boiler, let's say, or HBHC, and the customer cannot afford to do the full electrification at this time, with the available incentives, would we, the Green Bank, be willing to finance the high-efficiency replacement versus a, you know, base level minimum efficiency replacement for boilers and furnaces? And to date, you know, our position has been for replacements. That is something that we will consider. We will present to the borrower the electrification option, and we will incentivize it to the best extent that we can as the Green Bank, but recognizing that we cannot do grants. We are limited in some cases in how far we can incentivize those those projects. So there is still today, and it's highly variable based on type of building, based on insulation, you know, what those cost differentials are. But there is a significant cost differential in some cases, particularly in family four houses. So that's the kind of current status. But we do get this question fairly regularly. And so I wanted to tee it up, seek input from the board, and happy to answer questions or provide additional information.
Priya has her hand up.
It just reminds me, Eli. So, I mean, the question is, what would be the source of repayment for doing that, given that you can't make a grant? But I guess, you know, one of the things that I feel like we on our NHT and our real estate and policy side are experiencing is that there's a heavy push toward electrification. But candidly, and there's also a heavy emphasis, obviously, on racial equity and resident agency. That said, we're finding that a lot of residents aren't really interested in electrification. And it's, I'll give an example, at one of our properties, Galen Terrace, which we're redeveloping in Ward Eight, challenging neighborhood. And I've been pushing us to electrify the building. And affordable housing development is a zero-sum game. It's value engineering. If you're just constantly like, what? And the residents would rather have a community community room than to electrify. And and so I think, you know, there's this tension of being, oh, I, we know better. Electrification is good for you. Oh, yeah, we're saying racial equity and resident equity. And so I guess my point is, one thing I was reminded, we did a ribbon cutting for a property that our first new construction development, Liberty Place Apartments, last week. And John Fell, CEO, represented the mayor and gave remarks. And he talked about, they had, I forget what they call it, but they have like a little, not council, but the housing leaders for the administration, a team. So it's DCHA, DHCD, DCHFA, DEMPED, and they get together, I don't know, weekly, monthly, and share what's going on and setting priorities. And I guess, I wonder, does that exist on the energy side? Like, I'm wondering if there's a mayor's representative of sustainability, and then Tommy and you, and is there an opportunity to create some leadership structure there? And to my prior point, really thinking about, I kind of feel like a communications or education strategy on electrification is needed, but it's not DC Green Bank on its own, right? Like, it needs to be coordinated on, at the district level, because what we're finding is it's not just owners on the multifamily side that we can't convince. Residents just don't think, it's not a priority for them. And I don't know that we want to be telling them, like, this is, this is what's good for you. But I do think that, sorry, it's a little convoluted, but I think that there's, it feels like some coordinated strategy, like there seems to be on the housing side at the mayor's level, to create some sort of council that you guys are elevating that and talking about, you know, set, like, how can you guys work together to do that? Because, like, to your point, I just don't know that a grant on something like this, I don't think that's the point. I think you've got to change perception over time, rather than just like, give away the money or make this loan because you can't give away the money to do it, because we think it's right. Sorry, that was convoluted.
Great. Do you have thoughts on this point or is a separate point?
Yeah, no, on this point, um, I, I I'll try and be really brief, but I have a few points. One, and first and foremost, methane is poison. And we should not be putting poison into people's homes. And the real problem has been the lack of the health equity perspective and the education of the public in terms of the health benefits of electrification. And I think that's where what Priya's talking about could really move the needle in terms of people's awareness of the benefits of electrification. I think one of the big problems that we've had is that we talk about electrification in terms of carbon mitigation. And that's ridiculous, because if I were to go to Ward Eight and say, like, you have to electrify because of the climate crisis, they would be like, how's that impacting me? And I think that's totally fair. And the marginal change that that one building is not going to save the world. Um, however, I would say that recently in your hearing and in your testimony, which was exceptionally well received, and congratulations for that, you made the point that the Green Bank capitalization needs to be expedited. And that you guys are concerned about having sufficient funds to finance your pipeline and to keep it revolving so that it's sustainable. I understand that, and I'm sympathetic to it. But if there is such a shortage of capital for your pipeline, that you're going in front of council and saying, other projects that are funded by those capitalization sources are not as important as capitalizing us quickly and on schedule. Um, because our pipeline is so robust, you can easily eat at the margins and lead as a green entity. And recognize that we are past the point where we can accept methane as a bridge fuel. And I understand that that might mean that some projects won't get funded. And I understand that some communities might say, you know what, forget the Green Bank. I'd rather not miss the opportunity to have an updated community room, and I'd rather go methane. Like, no one's telling people what they can and can't do. Um, but I do think that this is a principle worth standing on. The advocacy community that supports you thinks it's a principle worth standing on. And if your pipeline is truly as robust as you say it is, there should not be an impact.
I appreciate that, Ari. And you're raising a lot of the points that were the purpose of us having. going through this exercise of really getting these perspectives. Rick, or do you have something on the same?
I, I do, although Ari just touched on what was going to be my main point, which is the following. I think if there's a Green Bank, and in year three, it's looking to finance fossil fuels, then my first question is, you've got too much money, or there's not enough pipeline. Yeah, so that brings a credibility concern. So I would be very wary. In fact, my, my position would be that we don't do fossil fuels. I think that's a mixed message, and it indicates a softness of our pipeline and our willingness to really do what's necessary to put our fingers on the scales to shift this, this economy or district into something that's, you know, more low-carbon. And then I would also note, I work more on the international side, but just thinking about what's happening, this is not a new issue. So if you think about US federal guidance to multilateral development banks and green banks, it's been no more fossil fuel financing at all unless it's very few exceptional circumstances. And when you dig into those exceptional circumstances, they tend to be legacy projects or like highly political projects like Ukraine or Kosovo that exist. It really isn't about new projects. There's, so, so we would be, you know, doing fossil fuels or financing fossil fuels, which is what this would be. We would be swimming upstream to the direction of travel.
Thank you. And just to quickly respond to a couple of threads. So there is a sustainable inter-agency, I forget the exact acronym, but it's supposed to be that coordinating committee. And that's the committee that Todd sits on, Dave Upwey from DOE, and Ted Trivie from SEU. So we're meeting monthly. You know, one questionnaire that you raised is, should we have someone from maybe Dinwiddie, the mayor's representative, to help us coordinate that and bring in where that's an overlay with other agencies? I think that's a good idea, and one thought we should, we should take back and see what to think about. And Ari is, is more aware than I am, but there are several electrification-focused coordinating committees. There's one in Sokestan Buildings, I believe, and there's one in Sokestan Vehicles that we're going to be attending. So there are a lot of coordinating efforts. I think there is not necessarily on the energy side that single coordinating piece, although DOE effectively serves that role, given that they're funding, you know, through the accelerator, us, and through, you know, SEU's funds, SEU. So they're filling in in that role, but I think, thinking about how to better coordinate and make sure we're communicating the rest of the agencies is a great, is a good target. On the
Also, can I just add a couple of other, there's the Climate Board Commission that is always interested in doing more with us. They are not funded, but this might be a place to plug them in and elevate both. There is, of course, the Sustainability Report that the Green Bank is designed to help facilitate a lot of those targets that will likely need to be revisited as this conversation evolves. And then there's also the Mayor's Infrastructure Council that's new and being launched. And Eli will be a part of that, myself, some others probably. So there, there will be more robust conversations about where to make these investments. But I think, Priya, your point is, is the right one. And I think as we continue to have these conversations around specific projects, it's really helpful to make sure Eli and team get the feedback on the board's position there. I, I want to be, it's, it's 12:37, Eli. I want to make sure that if there are other policy discussions you want to have, we tackle those as well.
Sure. The last piece on this one, and then we can shift to out-of-state, so to speak, funding. The, you know, on the pipeline piece, I want to be clear, we're not funding new methane projects. We're looking only at the legacy situation. What we have been doing from a longer-term and policy perspective is trying to focus on the finance piece, since that's our role, and to say, what is the equitable manner to address these legacy investments on the customer side? And because there will be a large-scale effort focused on the distribution system side of the mirror when we get to that stage. But we want to make sure that the customers, whether that's, you know, small business, whether that's affordable housing, that those customers are being treated fairly. And that if we can't do the financing today with our resources, we're working to identify, you know, what's the right bucket of resources to really address that transition. And that's, you know, I think that will be a part of the the Infrastructure Task Force conversation, certainly a part of the the competition for federal grants upcoming of the infrastructure bills. So certainly an area to look at, but I want to push back a little bit on that to make sure we're on the same page. On the projects outside of DC.
Sorry, Eli, before we pivot, do you feel like you got what you need on that subject? Or like, I just want to make sure that exercise is doing what it needs to do.
I, I think we do have a specific legacy project that we've been discussing a little more detail in the close session that will help tease out some of the details. But I think we have some good marching orders, particularly on the coordination side. And I think, and ask the board to reflect on this, and, you know, maybe in June, if we think it's necessary, we can come back and, and speak more formally on the policy. Great. Then with respect to projects outside of DC, from a statutory perspective, we are allowed to invest in projects outside of DC as long as we are not the sole long-term credit provider. And so in any scenario where there's other lender providing long-term capital, in theory, we can participate. That has not been our focus, particularly in our startup phase. My position has been, we really need to focus on DC first. We are and have, have gotten and continue to receive several inbounds questions about particularly solar projects in Maryland, often ones that are tied to DC heater lines that are eligible for DC SRECs, and in some cases involve DC developers. And so we wanted to, you know, raise the question for the board, and do we think we're in the position now, particularly as we have, you know, a couple of larger projects that are closing over the next two weeks, where we will have a majority of our capital available deployed to look at the potential to do, you know, a portion of projects outside of the district, where, you know, we're looking potentially with DC-based developer or where there's a strong tie to DC jobs. And before I turn over the floor, the other example that I want to get that I think is, you know, may fit in a different bucket. We also work with a lot of contractors, of course, who've worked on Maryland's side, the DC side, the Virginia side, and companies that have portfolios that span those three areas. And so it is certainly possible for us to do portfolio finance. It's focused on just DC. But some of the providers are looking to do portfolio finance. That's primarily DC, but may have installations in Maryland. On the electric vehicle side, many of the charging and will not yet charging, but hopefully soon charging and vehicle maintenance facilities are in Virginia or in Maryland, just given space constraints. In fact, the district itself has bus maintenance facilities that are in Maryland. And so looking at our broad goal of reducing the district's climate emissions, I think there's a case to be made for participating in those financings. But I wanted to seek input and guidance and have discussion. All right.
Yeah, just wanted to give you some background. We've been doing a lot of analysis on this segment of the solar market that is on DC feeders, but in Maryland. About 18% of SREC generated annually are in this group. The director has stated that that number is probably higher than council ever intended. A lot of savvy private entities are figuring out how to exploit the loophole in the law. And I don't mean to use the term loophole pejoratively, because in a, in a very convoluted manner, these Maryland ratepayers pay a portion of the RPS compliance. So there, there's, there's reason that, that they should take advantage of the SREC market. And solar for all, our policy is to not invest in any solar capacity development outside of district borders. And I just wanted to, to give you that background. You should know, though, that SETF, you know, obviously, there are two funds that capitalize at Green Bank, REDF, which is renewable energy, and SETF, which is sustainable energy. REDF is paid for through compliance with the RPS, which is a Roob Goldberg machine with alternative compliance payments, yada, yada, yada. SETF is much more straightforward. It's a surcharge on resident ratepayers' bills. SETF is not paid for out of these Maryland entities. So I, I, I don't have a strong opinion on which way you go on this, Eli. But I, I would recommend that you make that distinction clear between solar projects and non-solar projects outside of, of district borders, if, if you intend to, to go for that. Because I, I think that the non-solar projects outside of district borders is taking district money and moving it outside of the city. So I'm just, you know, wanted to make sure that that was on your radar.
Thanks, Ari. Any other perspectives or reactions from the board on this piece?
Not, not a reaction, but a question. I'm remembering, and maybe I'm totally wrong, that there was some prohibition, either in the enabling legislation that keeps us inside the district only? Or, or is this even, so there is no, my question is, is there any other legal barrier or anything that we need to change in our authorities to be able to do this?
The limitation is that we can't be the sole long-term credit provider outside of the district. But beyond that, there's significant flexibility.
Eli, are there other jurisdictions? Like, does the Connecticut Green Bank ever invest in projects outside of the border of Connecticut? Does Montgomery County Green Bank ever invest in projects outside of Montgomery County?
There's no uniform answer. New York, for instance, has invested outside of New York. NYSEC invests outside of New York City, but sort of focuses regionally. I'm not aware of Connecticut Green Bank itself investing outside of Connecticut, but their, you know, IPC, who we're working with on Navigator, is effectively a spun-out portion of Connecticut Green Bank. So it kind of depends on how you think about that. I, I think the questions that you were raising, Ari, are the right ones about ratepayer, who's actually paying for the credits and who's receiving the benefits? And how do we make sure that if we did, particularly with solar, participate in those projects, that there's sufficient value that's still flowing back to DC residents?
One of the things that we, just as a frame, is also just based on where the bank is and their maturation. So Ari, thank you for laying out some of those data points. It's helpful context, but also just thinking about where the bank is, capacity, and sort of getting to a self-sustaining financially perspective posture. You know, is this the right thing to prioritize right now? And I think that feedback is helpful from the board. Priya, you have your hand up.
I think these are really interesting policy discussions. It feels, it's hard in these monthly or whatever bimonthly meetings to ever, you know, have enough time to get to them. I guess maybe I would just suggest that maybe once we get a chief credit officer on board, it may be worth thinking about, like, a board retreat or a board strategic conversation where we have a longer time block to delve into some of these bigger questions.
Yep, it's a great flag, Priya. There were a few things that were helpful for Eli and team from a decision point perspective to at least get our feedback.
You know, I totally agree. I'm just saying that once, this is more just a consistent issue, right? It's not about today. It's just this, this board structure, which I get, like, but I think having, you know, a four-hour meeting once, you know, twice a year, might be worthwhile to be able to have a little bit more time to discuss these things.
Yep, helpful.
Yeah. I mean, you know, since you asked for, you know, views, I'll, I'll tell you my views in the first instance, right? I don't, you know, having given it that much thought. But I do recognize, one, that DC is different than New York State or Connecticut because of our size, kind of our limited geographic footprint, and how much of our energy supply, you know, comes from outside, you know, district borders. So I think, in the first instance, I could, I could imagine, or I see the rationality of being able to operate outside of district on occasion. I was trying to think of comparables, and I know in other sectors where public money is going in, there typically is some sort of test around content. Like, so is there DC content? Is there DC investment money? What's the final aim of this investment? Is it really to benefit DC citizens? Where are the impacts? So I, I would imagine my gut reaction would be, I think we should be open to investments outside the district, so long as they're inside the, the, our, our role, where we're not the sole provider of financing. But we probably need an internal test, like, you know, when, when we do that, it should, you know, it should be because we've been able to kind of check the box that this is primarily a DC beneficial, or there's lots of DC content. So, so there's probably some work that needs to be done as to, you know, what are the criteria that we would evaluate an out-of-district investment against? So that we can, you know, hand-in-heart say, yes, this is here, but really, this is a DC-focused, you know, investment. And like I said, another, I'm trying to think of similar things. Again, where I work on the international side, it's often about, the problem is often where you're investing in a developed country, but, but you're trying to get credit for it being a developing country investment. So usually, there's tests around how much of the content is coming from the developed country? What, how much human engagement or is from the developing countries? So not to say DC is a developing country, just to, you know, how much investment money is coming from, from, from DC in this case? Where are the ultimate impacts? Where's the energy going? Is this the purpose of the investment? Was it, the original idea was to do this outside, but to provide power, let's say, into DC? So having that kind of test, where we can kind of score something, and scoring above a certain level on kind of DC purpose and content, I think I would be comfortable with that. It's my initial reaction.
Yeah, Rick, it's helpful feedback, and it dovetails with a recent executive committee call that we had, where we were really sort of scoping out, what are the buckets of sort of sectors that the Green Bank really wants to influence, right? Like, just starting to create a bit more of a funnel of priorities. And other green banks have done that, just based off of sort of the regional resources that they have to take advantage of. So I think that test makes good sense, and I think Priya's feedback on having longer workshop sessions makes sense. I appreciate you guys entertaining this opportunity to workshop it now, because in our conversations, it was clear that Eli needed some of that sort of atmospheric read from everyone, so thank you for, for that. I apologize for sort of cutting in, but I'm sensitive to quorum situations. And so, Eli, it's 12:52. I know we lose Priya at one, and we are probably on borrowed time with Deb. So is there anything else you want to cover now, or you tell me how you want to?
I think that's helpful for, for this session. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So if there is nothing else, I'm scanning the Zoom. I'm going to move to close this session and pursuant to Sections Two for a 10 and 11 of Section 2-575 of the Open Meetings Act. We are now going to move into the closed portion. We have a separate link for that.
Yeah. I believe there's a roll call requirement to do that. And I'll do that right now. And I'm assuming you, you needed a motion, so I'll move, so moved. And then has it been seconded? Priya Chandra, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick Nogira, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deb Loomis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Todd Monash, how do you vote?
Aye.
Huber votes in the alternative. Brandy Colander, how do you vote?
Aye.
Adam Chair, we are approved to go into a closed session.
Thank you.